Good evening, everyone. Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole for Monday, April 8th. Under Item 1.1, welcome to Rockwell.
Weigel, Joffler, Hager, Maugh, Marshall, here, Bean, or Sandy?
Here.
And Bean.
Here.
We have a call.
Great. The mobile version for the city's website isn't working on my tablet, so anybody have Item 1? Here you have it. Appreciate it. Item, uh, no, discussion items, 2.0 flood update. Mr. Grasser, good evening.
Good evening, Council President Sandy, members of City Council. Quite a bit has changed in the week since I was up here last. The rivers have definitely been moving and on the rise. Currently in Grand Forks, we're at about forty and a half feet. Just kind of a situational, looks like they're cresting down in Fargo. In general, the rivers south of Fargo have crested and are on the way down. The rivers north of Fargo are still waiting to crest. They're on the way up. The latest projection that we have from the Weather Service, I know you've seen me kind of wave this or on before if you look at that in the National Weather Service site, indicates a general crest expectation here of about forty-eight feet for Friday, Saturday, this coming up weekend. So, that's good news, if we can hold at those levels. We did have another flood fight, fighters meeting today and some updates as to that. There are a number of closures going on, road closures and things like that. Riverside Park on North First Street, stop logs have been put up there, that road is closed. Probably the news of the day is that the Sorley Bridge is also closed. Stop logs are going up, particularly on the east Grand Forks side at this point in time. And we're probably going to be closing the Point Bridge Tuesday would be, I think, when we're probably going to catch that one. And again, that's just due to rising water. Point Bridge, the first thing that happens, you won't see the river real close to the sills or the stop logs, but on the Minnesota side, if you remember, you get over the bridge and kind of go through a low spot, that starts to go underwater, so that's kind of the trigger on the Point Bridge. Greenway trails, just a note there, the upper trails are generally dry, but the lower trails are probably either underwater or have portions of them underwater, so be very careful when you're in the greenway at this point in time. Quick note about the Shady Ridge area, if you remember in some of the briefings, there's kind of two entrance roads to the east side of the Shady Ridge, call it Shady Ridge Court. That northerly low water crossing, as expected, actually is underwater at this point in time. The southerly low water crossing is expected to go underwater probably Tuesday or Wednesday. And the fire department, emergency services are going to be positioning equipment on the wet side no later than tomorrow. So, they'll have equipment set up to provide service on the wet side once that cutoff occurs. Probably lastly, without getting into a lot of detail, almost all of our pump stations are activated at this point in time. And what that means is the pump stations are situated on top of the drainage pipe, the stormwater pipes. And the pipes are low, so the Red River is backing up into those pipes. So what happens then, when we activate the pump stations, is we put a, we close the gates, so we separate the system from the Red River. And then, once that happens, we turn the pumps on, so that any kind of interior drainage from snow melt and rain and things like that gets pumped back over to the river. So, almost all of those are activated at this point in time. You don't really see it, but they are active. So with that, any questions?
Mr. Weber?
You mentioned the forecast crest for the Red River. Red Lake River? What are we anticipating there?
Red Lake River, I'm trying to remember the, I think they're about twenty-four, twenty-five at this point in time, about Wednesday-ish. What we are kind of seeing, it looks like their crest is going to come in about the same time as the main stem of the Red. And so I think that's going to push us up a little higher than we might otherwise have been. And we're seeing that on a couple of the Minnesota tributaries, the Sand and the Marsh. They're just, they're kind of picking up the Red as it's coming north. So, I think that's what's pushing us to the forty-eight feet. So we'll keep monitoring that. We're still a ways off. The good news is, look like they pegged Fargo very well at thirty-five. Fargo looks like they're cresting almost right on the money for that, so hopefully they've got us pegged too.
And from crest until it starts dropping again, is that, do we have a sense of what we might anticipate for that?
They're showing, like on Grand Forks, we're actually holding fairly high at that forty-eight level for probably two or three days. A lot of water coming through the system, so, you know, we're going to stay high. It's not going to be a quick peak and a quick drop, at least in Grand Forks. Our drainage basin is pretty big, so a lot's going to depend on what happens with the Red Lake and Crookston. You're seeing a lot of, when you look at the gauges, you're seeing an awful lot of ice action going on at Crookston and Fisher gauges. So, we're kind of slowing the water down, then it's going to come through in a pulse.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Grasser? Thank you for the flood update, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item 2.1, legislative update. Mr. Veen, did you have a legislative update today?
I, you have, I didn't know if Pete was going to say something first. I'll just run with that. Well, I spent some time at legislature last week. There's probably two items that I will probably identify, although there's other critical bills that are still going through. Senate Bill 2020 didn't pass through House appropriations today. It will go on to the House sometime this week, I would expect, and then we will have a conference committee. There's a fair amount of difference between the Senate version and the House version. The areas that that impacts us most is the funding for the last five million for the water treatment plant. That still stays in the municipal pocket. In fact, the House increased that a little bit from what the Senate had, so that's for a majority advantage. The Red River Valley Water Supply Project, the House actually decreased the money from fifty to thirty million and changed the cost share to sixty-fourty, which is an affordability issue with us. That'll end up in conference committee also, so I expect that that's going to come somewhere in between, that will be affordable. And probably the last part of this one I would mention is that we work pretty close with Representative Mark Sanford on an amendment to make sure that the impacts of the FM diversion would be within means for the city of Grand Forks. Normally, it's required to be within one-tenth of one foot at the hundred-year elevation. And we've got the wording in that. I've worked with the Fargo FM diversion attorney for language. It's reliable to them, but also make sure citizens here are protected. So, that has made it two now, we'll vote for appropriations. And then, that wasn't in the Senate version, so that would still be a piece of negotiation to take place. But having talked to the Senator that's going to be leading that, they're in favor of that, I don't see any issues. That's House, or Senate Bill 2020. And then, Senate Bill 2275 was the long-term low-interest loans that we were looking for to expand. That was passed by the Senate pretty overwhelmingly, but defeated by the House. Now that's coming back on the Senate side as a part of another bill, and so we'll be watching that closely, because I think we'll still try to be eligible for some of that funding for a number of projects that have to do with infrastructure.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Veen? Overall, your sense, things are going well?
Yep, they're, they're going well.
Thank you for the update. Before we go on to the additional discussion items, now that we've finished the updates, Mr. Nagel asked if he could say a few words tonight. I know it's very, so now is a very good time, if you would like to come forward and speak related to the Herald Building and the library, now would be a good time to do so. Otherwise, there is no other time in our agenda where it makes sense.
You said you give me all the time I need, or what?
How much time would you like? Would you please introduce yourself with the record?
My name is T.J. Nagel. Live at sixteen oh four South Washington Street, Grand Forks, North Dakota. Great little city. And it's good to see where all the city is really manning around ma and pa nature with this flooding and all that stuff. But my kind of passion here is the library. I've been here in Grand Forks for six years. And the first year, I didn't get too involved with government or the library, but then I met some new people and I did, so I've been following that pretty darn close. And it's a great library, great location, and I'd just like, would like to see more community input in the decision-making or the ideas. We have so many ideas out here in this city, and that brings me to ward meetings. And that's one of my requests, are ongoing ward meetings, at least once every quarter, so that we can get input from all the creative people that live in Grand Forks. We probably don't need as many consultants. I mean, we have a lot of good brain power at U N D in marketing and so forth, and in the high schools. I know some of my friends are artists and so forth, but to get together to how we can build a better, thriving Grand Forks, North Dakota. So, the Herald Building is another, I have a lot of questions, and I just, I'm not high-tech savvy, so I guess there was a bunch of report on the Herald Building on the Internet or something like this. And Mr. Hagel's going to give me a copy of it, so I can read and study it. But to me, it's figures, and it's kind of perplexing to me that not enough community involvement has been made in this Herald Building. And we're going down there, why are, like, why are we getting involved in a real estate business? Grand Forks, the taxpayers. And then you're putting, as I understand it, four non-taxing entities in that building: U N D, the library, Grand Forks Public Schools, and part of the city. It's just I have these questions, why are we doing this? We're not going to get any taxes from those people. And then it gets down, how much is this really going to cost? That's what I'd like to know. Like the library, how much is it going to cost? Is it fourteen dollars, I heard this figure, is that a square foot per month, per year? What is it? But that's, it's cost, and then besides that cost, there's labor, probably have to be some man or lady power down there, and there'd be maintenance and insurance, et cetera, et cetera. So how much does it cost per month just to move that little library down as a branch? I'd like to know. As well as these other taxing, the U N D, it's all taxpayers pay for everything. Public schools, taxpayers pay for everything. And the city offices, I guess, that are over there already, right? Todd? So I guess I'm just looking at, like a business would, what are the raw costs here? How much is this going to cost us? And, that's, I guess, for now, all I have, but I thanks for giving me the time. Any questions, or?
Questions from Mr. Nagel?
It better be easy.
You have very good points, Mr. Nagel. I think, in general, we've been trying to have more public meetings. We apparently, maybe we didn't notify the public very well about our Growth Month meeting today, but it was noticed in the paper and it was on the city's website, so when we were talking about the Herald. I think at some point, Mr. Phelan will probably have, the Herald Building will come to committee of the whole meeting first, or will it go directly to a city council meeting where we will JDA for next week?
Yeah, we could go to JDA next week, if we're going to move forward with the purchase and the lease. I think importantly, once we do, if we do buy the building, there'll be input sessions on, as part of the master plan with all the partners that we have and the public about what we finally put into that building beyond what may be a city office. So I think there'll be plenty of opportunities, whether it's U N D or the public library, and those that serve those constituencies will have plenty of time to make sure their fingerprints are on.
Great. I think boiling down on the costs would be very important for all of us as well. Yeah, Mr. Weber?
As far as award meetings, Mr. Nagel, awards three and four have been having combined award meetings more frequently than once a quarter, especially if we include the meetings on traffic calming. There was a major meeting, was that just last week? I think here, we had maybe sixty, seventy people show up for that. And so we do continue to have them. Sometimes they're disappointing. We, those meetings, all of the wards had meetings over the last two or three weeks. This had originally been announced in the Mayor's State of the City speech. Some of them were fairly well attended, others, there was hardly anyone showed up. But Ward three and four tend to be a couple of the wards that are generally well-attended when we have meetings, and so we have those probably at least every other month. As far as the city getting in the real estate business, current plans are for the city to actually own far less real estate over the next five years than we currently own downtown. The city has never purchased private property lightly, it's only done so when it's been of strategic importance. And that will be discussed in further detail next week at 5:30 with the Jobs Development Authority preceding city council. So, that'll be, that staff report will come out on Thursday or Friday, and there will certainly be more time for public input at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. And I think it's important to point out as well, related to the Herald Building, the city requested an independent company look at the finances related to leasing versus purchasing. And this independent organization identified that we were by far ahead, assuming we needed the space. The city was by far ahead by purchasing the property rather than leasing that space. In addition to that, the lease that was proposed to the city included property taxes, because the people that were paying and buying the building and leasing it to the four nonprofit entities that don't pay property taxes, we were all going to be paying the property taxes that that for-profit organization were passing through to us anyway. So, it's a net, it's a net zero, whether we pay it to them and pay it back to ourselves or not. So, okay, Mr. Nagel, thank you very much. We do very much appreciate public input. Moving on, item 2.2, Acme Tools' application for a property tax incentive for an expanding business. Mr. Brooks, good evening.
Thank you. I'll start off presentation by mentioning that there's a mistake in staff report, the number of jobs I put in there that it was four a year, but it's actually going to go from twenty-six at the start of the project to forty at the end of year five. So I made a mistake on that, I wanted to correct that out of the shoot, so. But with that, I want to introduce Brandon Bobmaugh with the EDC, and let him kind of make introductions of the representatives of Acme Tools that are here tonight, with your permission.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks, and members of the committee. Brandon Bobmaugh with the Grand Forks Region, EDC. Thank you for the opportunities to present this application in front of you. Tap, property tax exemption on behalf of Acme Tools. Just as you know, by way of introduction, Acme Tools is both national and international e-commerce company, selling more than seventeen thousand varieties of tools and equipment online, with some of the latest e-commerce technologies, specialized software, and unique approaches to customer service. Also, Acme Tools has been in Grand Forks for more than seventy years, but that's made possible by adjusting to the market and these changes like the e-commerce. So this investment in front of you today reflects that, as they are looking to expand their current distribution center in the Business Park by forty thousand square feet, which is doubling its size. The expansion project projects employee growth of fourteen in the first five years, and payroll increases from one-point-two million to two-point-one million. So the application is, it highlights a property tax exemption on the increased value of that property, so the expansion, in a five-year declining format, so the first year after completion of the project would be a hundred percent exempt, the second year would be eighty percent exempt, sixty, forty, twenty, until they're paying full tax rate. And so traditionally, this is the format that the JDA has provided. It's the standard approach. When you put that all together, the estimated annual tax liability, or the annual tax liability on that expansion is forty-one thousand, but when you put all those steps in a blender, it comes out to a hundred and twenty-three thousand, property tax exemption to expand those jobs and payroll. So, tonight's decision would be to make recommendation next week, that the JDA set a public hearing for me, twentieth. And just an update too, the EDC Board of Directors have reviewed this, and they make recommendation that you consider this application. So with me tonight is both Steve Coleman and Steve Hetlin with the Acme Tools. And Steve Coleman has offered to come and make a little bit more, probably more eloquent introduction of their own company. Steve, you can join me.
Hi there, Steve Coleman. So just to give you a little bit of background on Acme Tools, I know that you guys, we've been around here since nineteen forty-eight, and started by my grandfather on North Third Street, so it's a third-generation business, and we are very committed to continuing our business in Grand Forks and continuing the growth. And I also, I want to thank the city of Grand Forks for helping us get to this point with all the help that you guys have given us in the past, and also the state of North Dakota for helping us also grow our business. But, a couple of things. One is, just a little bit about, we're four-hundred-and-seventy employees, company-wide, so a lot of people really don't know that we have four-hundred-and-seven employees. We have stores in North Dakota, Minnesota, and Iowa, so ten retail stores. And our fastest-growing store is really our e-commerce business. And I think everybody realizes that, you know, shops online today, and we basically have roughly two-hundred-and-ten employees in Grand Forks, and seventy of those employees are dedicated for our e-commerce business. And our current warehouse in the Business Park is one-hundred percent dedicated to our e-commerce business. Twenty percent of our revenue is between, is the state of California, New York, and Texas, represent twenty percent of our revenue. So it's clearly all fifty states, and we're continuing to invest, we're continuing to grow. We plan on doubling our business in the next four years. So if you just take a standard rate of twenty percent growth, and you take that out with, in four years, we're going to double our business. Last year, we grew our online business over forty percent. So very conservative growth there. So, again, we're very, very excited about the online business. We think it's a very high-growth business, and we're excited for it. So, really what we're doing today is really doubling our distribution center. We're going from forty thousand square feet to eighty thousand square feet, and we basically, it's going to allow us, hopefully, to get through the next four years. That site is actually built for four phases, so this would be Phase One, we completed four years ago. This would be Phase Two for forty thousand, and that site also has an additional eighty thousand more distribution center that we can have. So, we're going to continue to grow our business, and we're going to continue and to invest in the Grand Forks. So, that's about it. And just real quick, we have over sixty thousand items on our website today, and basically over, I think, four-hundred-and-eighty different brand names on our website today, so. But, any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Coleman?
Thank you.
Any thoughts, or? Move by Marshall, grant, second by Veen? Any other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Coleman, good luck. Item 2.3, Ordinance Amending Section 24-0203 Relating to Quorum of the Events Center Commission. Good evening, Mr. Dorsey.
President, Sandy, members of the committee, I'm going to speak to this item on behalf of Howard Swanson, who is not able to be in attendance this evening. This is really a housekeeping matter. The earlier Events Center Commission, at their last meeting, updated, amended their bylaws to clarify what a forum is made up of, in that it would be a four voting members. The commission includes both voting and non-voting members, so this will help clarify what is a forum. Howard has correspondently included this language regarding the quorum in ordinance, and that's what you have before you, and he has asked that we move this board for first reading.
Any questions related to the updated ordinance? Mr. Weber, move approval, second by Weber. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Very good. Item 2.4, Reappointments to the Civil Service Commission of Wayne Berlog and Patsy Nies. The buddy interested in discussing this, moved by Veen, second by Marshall. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.5, Downtown Parklet Project. Mr. Veen, move.
Good evening, President, Sandy, members of the committee. I have a map to look at to discuss the current request. Okay, just as a quick refresher, between 2016 and 2018, the city was working under a pilot, pilot project for parklets in the downtown. In that period, of those three years, we had two that existed, and it's nice to be able to say it was a successful pilot program so far. So due to the current plans that we're working with our consultants for the downtown action plan, ultimately, what comes out of that work could determine on how we end up ultimately codifying a parklet program. So in the meantime, last month, you approved a one-year extension or a one-season extension to the two parklets. Since that time, we've had a third, as indicated in your staff report. Half Brothers Brewing indicated that they would very much also like to have a parklet. So that's what's being presented tonight, to approve one additional parklet now for the remainder of this year. And speaking to Mr. Sandy earlier today, we put together a map showing you the general locations on North Third Street, so I've highlighted in green sort of the linear boundary of where these two, or I'm sorry, three parklets fit in. The numbered boxes in red indicate a kind of a block number that was assigned to these areas in one of the previous traffic studies. So the corresponding table to the right shows each block number, and then just loosely, we're just referring to the west and east side of the streets. So those numbers indicate how many parking stalls are identified on both the west and the east side, per that stretch, basically from Second Avenue all the way to just past Rombus Brewing Company, closer to the county parking ramp. So just in general, without any parklets, the current plan identifies approximately a hundred-and-nineteen on-street parking stalls. With approval of the third parklet, each parklet consumes about two parking stalls that we accommodate for, so that's six if we just do the math. Approval of the third then would result in a total of one-hundred-and-thirteen on-street parking stalls. Of course, that's not taking into account and parking in the ramps, as well as on some of the other side streets. With that, staff would open it up to discussion. I had some conversations with a few others when this request came in, in terms of should we have one more to make the three. And I think part of our rationale of moving forward requesting a third was, we all know that there is going to be heavy construction activity, you know, throughout the remainder of the summer with the MERS. You know, we don't know how that's going to turn out, ultimately. We plan our detour routes and try to make those types of accommodations. But the rationale for possibly a third parklet was just to add one more incentive or enticement to hopefully, you know, keep people coming into the downtown, whether it's just put traffic or just in general. We don't want a Debbie Downer, so to speak, downtown. During this construction time, we'd like to at least offer this as one more amenity. There's representatives from the DDA here, if you have any more specific questions in general from them, but with that, staff is recommending approving this third parklet for this extended pilot season. And coming out of this season, then we would anticipate to bring something back to you in terms of any code changes that we may make to the downtown zoning ordinance in general.
Mr. Weber, would you like to, do you have any questions or comments from Mr. Nagel?
Thank you, Council President Sandy, for allowing me to comment on this. We've mentioned the word parking, so I just like to always point out, we've recently, we're completing a parking study, or we've completed it? We're completing it. And it's worth noting, we have over four thousand parking spaces downtown. At peak use, we use less than sixty percent of those. And the peak use actually occurs during the afternoon when central high is in session. So, to do something that affects such a small, small number of parking spaces down here to add to the inviting atmosphere downtown during the construction season, during any period in our downtown, I would like to move approval of the third parklet.
There's a motion? There's a motion? Is there a second? Mr. Veen seconds? Are there other? Of course, Mr. Veen.
I think the basic question I have is the DDA supports this, right?
Yes.
And I think that's the reason why I wanted to second it, is we do know we're going to have the construction traffic going by there, detour traffic, there'll be dust. Now, little of that, that's what they're asking for, and that's why I seconded the motion.
Ms. Marshall, did you have a comment?
I just have a question. Do we anticipate any additional requests coming our way, or would these three be the ones that we'd be looking at in total?
To date, this is the only one that we're aware of in terms of any activity this year. There was another establishment that was thinking about it, but decided to maybe hold off and sort of work with what they currently have now and wait for the construction season to basically come and go, and then we'll revisit that then next month.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Weber, any thoughts, comments? I'm a little bit surprised that Half Brothers would want to take up two of the parking spots, knowing that Demers Avenue, all of the parking is going to be gone on Demers Avenue. But if that's what they want, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't jump on board and say great. Hopefully, this year will be a good test for them. Hopefully, it does drive traffic downtown. Any other, seeing no other thoughts? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post the same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gangler. Item 2.6, Resolution Establishing the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee. Mr. Gangler.
We are asking for approval of the attached resolution. This is a 10-year event or process that's associated with the census. The planning department is sort of taking the lead on forming the committee and all the things that are associated with the process for the census awareness campaign is what it's referred to. It's a national program. There is a director at the state level who's been funneling information to us. So staff is recommending that you adopt the resolution and which also authorizes the mayor then to form a larger committee that the planning department will help spearhead then to run through the remainder of the census process.
Any questions for Mr. Gangler? Ms. Weber moves approval. Ms. Weber, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Gangler, what's the, I'm sorry to interrupt and call you back. What's the timing on that? When are we expecting that the mayor will have that?
In probably within the next two weeks, staff will present the list of committee members.
Great, thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you. Item 2.7, Real Bids and Skid Control. Bid number 2019-10 Chemicals and Equipment, bid number 2019-11 Aerial Spray. Is anybody interested in, Mr. Weber, second by Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Great, we can kill the mosquitoes this year. Item 2.8, Create District for Project 7907, District 723, Paving Streetlights for Opportunity Park First. Good evening.
Good evening, Council President Sandy, members of the council. This project includes the paving and streetlights on South 42nd Street and 36th Avenue South. This area is considered one of the city's strategic infrastructure growth areas. This area has had, recently had sanitary sewer lift station built, and more recently, projects for the installation of city utilities have been brought forth and are on the agenda tonight for bid approval. Under previous paving projects completed on South 42nd and 36th Avenue, they did not have any streetlights installed. And because most streetlights have been installed in this area, the street lighting was expanded to include these areas under this project and to try to get an economy of scale on the streetlights by completing a little bit larger project. The total cost for this project is estimated to be $1,290,000. And this project will be special assessed to the benefiting properties with the exemption of the city's share of the paving and streetlights on South 42nd Street. South 42nd Street is a classified street, and per city policy, the city's cost share would be 80%. Paving and streetlights may be protested per state law. Staff recommended action is approve engineer's report, create special assessment district, direct engineer department to prepare plans and specification advertised for construction for city project 7907.
Regarding the streetlights, move by Veen, second by Marshall. Any other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.9, Plans and Specs for Project 7799, District 717, Paving North 62nd Street from Gateway Drive to 500 feet north. Moving.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. This project is to pave North 62nd Street. It was initiated at the request of a local property owner. Again, this is a collector's street, so the city is responsible for 80% of the construction costs with the remaining 20% to be special assessed. The total construction cost is currently estimated at $259,000, and the project is scheduled to be bid on April 29th. And with that, at this time, staff would recommend approving the plans and specifications.
Move by Weber. Second by Veen. Seeing no other questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Great. Item 210, Bid Awards. Part A, Project Numbers 7903, 0405, Districts 552, 338, and 553. Sanitary Sewer, Water Main, and Storm Sewer for Opportunity Park First. Yes, sir.
Good evening once again. Bids were received on April 1st, 2019. Two bids were received. The two bids were opened and read aloud. The low bid was $690,376.25, which was submitted by RJ Zaverland Sons. This low bidder is approximately 6% below the engineer's estimate of $733,999.25. Staff would recommend award bid to low bidder RJ Zaverland Sons in the amount of $690,376.25 for city projects 7903, 7904, and 7905.
Move by Marshall, second by Veen. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Real Bids for Project B, 7909, Lift Station Number Seven Upgrade. Mr. Walker, good evening.
Good evening, Council President Sandy, members of the committee. Bids for this project were opened up last Monday. Bidders were allowed to submit a package for the general work, or submit a bid for the electrical work, or submit a bid for the combination of the entire project. Award would then be based upon the bid combination that resulted in the lowest price for the project. We received four bids for the, for the project. Lift Station Seven is one of 42 stations that the city owns for pumping sanitary sewage. And the intent of the project is to rehabilitate this station, make it efficient and reliable for the next 15 to 20 years. The project's located at 310 Gateway Drive, just north of Gateway Drive, and then east of the English Cooley over by the, what used to be the H.G. Iverson Building. Project, or excuse me, the lift station was originally constructed in 1962 and rehabilitated last in 1997. The bids as they came in were approximately 1% above the engineer's estimate. And our recommendation is to award the general work to CC Steel in the amount of $233,350, and the electrical work to RBB Electric in the amount of $95,009.
Any questions for Ms. Walker? Mr. Veen, move by Veen. Second by Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 210, Real Bids for Project C, 7953 and 7954. Traffic Signals, Turn Lanes, Gateway 55th, and Demers and Columbia. Mr. Walker.
So you have three projects on the agenda that are, have the same situation. They are all, they are the signal project that's before you. There is a pavement rehabilitation project on North Washington Street, and then there is the Demers Avenue Reconstruction Project. All three of those projects, we have not received bids as of yet. All three of them will have bids opened up on Friday at the DOT in Bismarck. And they are projects that are proposed by the DOT so that the contract will not be with the city and the contractor, but rather the contract will be with the contractor and the DOT. And we have been asked to concur in the award of the bids. So we will be receiving updated information from the DOT on Friday. We will update the staff report for you so that you will have updated information before the council meeting on Monday. So with that, this project involves constructing two traffic signal systems and turn lane projects. We previously had both projects before you, probably separately, but because of the nature of the project, they've been combined by the DOT. One involves putting a traffic signal and, and turn lane improvements at Gateway Drive and 55th, and the other one is on Demers Avenue and Columbia Road, on-off ramps on the West, Wesserly side of Columbia. The 55th and Gateway Project, the total cost is currently estimated at just a little bit over $1 million. There is not a city's share on that one. And the Demers-Columbia West Ramp Project is currently estimated at $768,000, and the city's share is 10% of that, or $76,800. The funding for the project is from the Street and Infrastructure Fund, and construction is anticipated, or expected for the 2019 construction. I'm not looking for a recommendation tonight because I'll update the staff report with, with information of the low bid results for, on council. I do not.
Item 210, Project 7974 Concrete Panel Replacement on Washington Street from 8th Avenue North to Gateway.
So this is the second of the DOT projects. We haven't opened the bids yet. They'll come in on Friday. We'll update the staff report. This project involves just rehabilitating the pavement, replacing broken and cracked panels, pavement grinding, dowel bar installation, and miscellaneous pavement improvements. Total project cost estimated is just a little bit over $1.1 million with the city's share of 10% at $92,000. Again, no recommendation at this point in time. We'll come back with a staff report before council.
I'd skip ahead to Project F, but I don't want to. Let's just go with you, Project 842, University Avenue Reconstruction.
Good, because.
It would have been.
Okay, so for this project, we opened bids last Wednesday. We had two bidders submitting bids with the lowest bid received of construction in just a little under $12 million for the project. The engineer's estimate was $12,600. The low bid was approximately 5% below the engineer's estimate. So there's a number of project features that are proposed to be assessed to UND at 100%, and they include pedestrian lighting, landscape features, median planters, sidewalks, and that type of thing, with the remainder of the project costs being split 50/50 between UND and the city. There is also a component for some water main replacement work that's funded 100% by, by the city. So when we add 5% contingencies and engineering costs and construction to the project, we're up to about $14.4 million. The city's share of that would be $4.1 million. Currently, we have water main, the water main replacement work budgeted. That accounts for $255,000 of the work. There is a line item in the Street and Infrastructure Fund for a project on North 39th Street that was proposed to be funded with SIG Fund, Strategic Infrastructure Growth Funds that came from economic development, and that accounted for $728,800. So the remainder of needs for the project from the city's end would be a little over $3 million. So that is the purpose for asking for a budget amendment of $3,130,000. I would also point out that AE is the engineer on this project, and I will likely be back at next committee of the whole month, whole meeting, to approve a, an amendment to their engineering agreement, as the original agreement only included design. So we'll have to amend it to include construction engineering. So with that, our recommendation is to award the low bidder, to the low bidder of construction in the amount of $11,997,92.67, and to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $3,130,000.
Any questions for Ms. Walker? Mr. Veen?
Well, there's several parts to this one. One having to do with the engineering agreement and the other on the construction.
The engineering agreement is going to be something I'm going to bring back for the next.
Great, move by Veen. Second by Weber?
I'll second, and.
Question?
Is this, the infrastructure work, is this something we're doing now because it's advantageous while everything's being torn up, or?
We were planning, if you're referring to the water main replacement work, we were planning on doing that anyway. And so this, it fit well with this project to combine.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And Mr. Walker, the last project update, 7750, Demers Avenue Reconstruction from Salt Lake to North Sixth Street.
Yeah, so this is the third one on the list where the bids will be opened up on Friday, and I'll come back with an updated staff report for your council. The city's share on this project is a 10% share. The total cost estimate that the DOT has put together is a little, a little bit less than $7.9 million. The city's share of that would be about $803,000. The city's share will be from the Street and Infrastructure Fund. And again, no recommendation at this point in time to councils.
Item 211, CPS Tax Order Agreement, Project 8054.
So historically, engineering agreements included quite a bit of information that was repetitive information. It was, it was basic standard language that included a number of different things, such as definition of terms, the payment process, use of documents, insurance requirements, suspension or termination of a contract, controlling law, dispute resolution, indemnification, and other things. So this was kind of standard language that really didn't change from project to project, and, but it was always typically included in the, in the agreement. So the purpose of this contract is to take that standard language and put it into a document that would be referenced on future documents that could then be incorporated into the contract just simply by reference. This particular one is with CPS. We have similar agreements with other engineering firms that we do repeat business with. But the one with CPS is set to expire, or actually, it did expire in, in March. So the intent is, is to renew that agreement. It basically is nearly identical language to the, the previous agreement that we had, that we worked with the city attorney in putting it together. This agreement does not obligate the city to hire the engineering firm, and it does not obligate any funds. That would, that would occur on future projects we would bring forth, an, an agreement that would be specific to the project, that would identify the cost and the true scope of work for that project, and then just incorporate this standard language by, by reference. With that, our recommendation is to approve this engineering services agreement with CPS.
Any comments or questions regarding item 212? Ms. Weber, move's approval. Is there a second? Second by Weber. Question, Ms. Weber?
This has been reviewed by the city attorney?
It has. Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 212, Construction Engineering Agreement Amendment Number Two for Project 819, District 736, Paving and Streetlights on Cherry Street from 11th to 17th Avenue South. Mr. Kanko, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. What you have before you is a engineering amendment for the construction engineering services for the Cherry Street reconstruction, mill and overlay, and street lighting on Cherry Street. This project, it's three sub-projects. We've got a reconstruction project going from 14th Avenue South down to 17th Avenue South, a mill and overlay from 11th to 14th, and streetlights from 11th Avenue to 17th Avenue. This project was bid and city council approved awarding the bid to STRATA for about $1.1 million back on April 1st. And this engineering agreement is for the construction engineering services to continue having CPS act as a consultant for us on the project. having CPS, uh, act as a consultant for us on the project. Uh, with that, staff is recommending approving, uh, Amendment Number Two with CPS for construction administration services in the amount of $223,213.
Any questions regarding item 212? Mr. Veen? Ms. Marshall, moves approval? Second by Veen. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposing sign? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 213, Construction Engineering Agreement, Project 7784, Sixth Avenue North Bike Path from 40th to the English Cooley. Ms. Krikko?
Good evening. Uh, this project, it's for Sixth Avenue North. It's for a shared use path project that we ended up getting transportation alternative funding for. And it's for a shared use path from North 40th Street to the English Cooley. This is gonna end up completing the, uh, the loop. The design work for this project was completed by in-house staff, uh, last spring and summer, uh, and from the unfilled engineering positions within the engineering department, we ended up having to go out to the consultant on this one. Um, Woodset Smith &amp; Melting and Associates was, uh, selected from a pre-qualified engineering list. We ended up negotiating with them for the engineering services for construction administration services, uh, for $65,981. And with that, uh, staff is recommending, uh, approval of the agreement.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Weber?
I'm inclined to, uh, move for approval of this, but I, I do have a question. Uh, you mentioned that because we have an unfulfilled position, uh, we had to go outside. The cost for these services was $65,000. Is this a position that we are in the process of filling?
Uh, we have a couple of positions that we've had open for several months. Uh, we've been actively advertising for those positions, and getting qualified candidates has been kinda difficult.
Difficult. Uh, anything further to say about that process, or unnecessarily?
Mr. Grass and I actually had that exact conversation this afternoon.
Mr. Sandy, do you have anything to add to this decision?
Between items 212, 13, 14, and 15, we're paying outside engineering firms $470,000 to do projects that perhaps we could do if we were able to fill our engineering positions. Um, I think that, uh, at some point, the city needs to take a really hard look at why we are unable to fill the positions in our engineering department, and, uh, and then perhaps the city can make, or the staff can make recommendations to the city council, because I would guess, when it comes to personnel, it's probably a financial issue. And so we may need to look at the pay for our engineering department. Um, and it, it may be expensive. We may be better off paying, paying consultants. I don't know for sure, but I would guess, uh, probably we wouldn't be. So perhaps we need to delve into that in the next budget session.
If we were to look at it only from, uh, this perspective, right here, it would seem that it would be much cheaper to hire.
One would think.
But that requires paying people, and then it's expensive.
And, and it probably affects all of the engineers, not just people that we're trying to hire.
And expensive can sometimes be cheaper than this is very, very expensive.
That's right.
Expensive is this much, very, very expensive is, is more. I hope we keep this in mind during our budget talks, Mr. Veen.
I agree. Mr. Veen, something to add?
I think when, when we have our strategy session on April 29th, this will probably be one of the discussion points. You know, we do have a salary and benefit plan, um, but it's probably paying some other things that we're working on too. So, um, just so you know, it's not from, has not been from a lack of effort to try to fill these positions. And so, um, I would say HR's worked harder with engineering over the last several months to fill these positions than any other department, so... And we may have to do something else, but we have to be sure what we do in engineering, we're kind of an all-for-one, one-for-all kind of organization. We gotta make sure how we impact other departments too, so... Anything else you wanna say, Lindsey?
No.
But I think when we come on the 29th, it will be not so much, you know, what we're getting paid and where the positions are. We've talked about, um, kinda eliminating some benchmark communities and trying to narrow down to where we need to compete for, and so we'll, we'll have a briefing on that. And I, I think the poster child for challenges to get folks, our, our engineers, and, and it partly is the community. We need a great community that people wanna move to, wanna stay here. It's about the pay, it's about where people work, what their work environment is like. It's, it's an assortment of things for us to be a competitive employer, um, to include pay.
Ms. Weber, yes?
I, I sometimes have a tendency to jump to conclusions, and I, I think I should correct myself here. It's not that in our last budget season that we decided to not fund these positions, but it may be the level at which we were willing to fund them may be a factor, among other factors in trying to hire.
Yeah. We try to be data-driven, and so, um, you know, we, we look at market positions with comparable cities, and I think we're gonna narrow some of the comparable cities with your approval as we move forward and to look at, um, different salary ranges, you know, how, how the positions fit within the whole structure of the organization. And so it'll be, um, engineering is a great example, probably among some good examples, uh, kinda the challenges we have. And so, you know, we, we talk about careers, and people probably got, you know, tired of saying, you know, just reduce some benefit plans. It's not, we're, we're challenged to getting competitive, um, folks into our organization, and, and we're not as, we don't have as many moves as the private sector in, in hiring folks.
Engineering is a particularly illustrative example, but it's, it affects other departments as well.
Absolutely. Yep. And I, and again, for the 29th, we're gonna go through another tranche of, of people retiring in our organization. We went through it about three years ago, and the next group is coming through. And, uh, so we even talk about public works operators, the, the folks that are putting up the stop blocks. They, they're some of the most valuable people we have in the city of Grand Forks. Uh, men and women that just know how to do things. Um, when I go out, if you go out to the work site, many of those people are gonna retire here in the next few years, and it's gonna be awfully hard to replace, um, those folks with new folks. So it's throughout the entire organization, I'm sure you are, and Paul.
The legislative committee worked hard to protect some of those benefits that involved some legislative actions this, this session. So I, I just hope that we, we keep this in mind. It's expensive to not be able to hire, uh, as is demonstrated here. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Moves approval?
Move by Weber, second by Weigle. Any other questions regarding item 213? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposing sign? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 214, Design Engineering Agreement for Project 7950, 17th Avenue South from 20th to 25th Bike Path. Ms. Krikko, again, good evening.
Yeah. Um, this is another transportation alternative-funded, uh, project. Uh, this was one that we ended up getting recently, and we're looking to have a consultant do the, uh, the design engineering, moving through all the federal processes, and, uh, all the other details associated with that. Um, WSM, once again, they came from our, our pre-qualified firm West. We negotiated the, uh, excuse me, uh, negotiated the agreement amount, and that was for $68,880. And staff is recommending approval of the agreement.
Any, uh, any thoughts?
Move by Marshall, second by Veen.
I, um, I, I will just say that, and I emailed David about this earlier today, it does seem mind-boggling to me that we need to pay an engineering firm $68,000 to do design and oversight of putting in a sidewalk. It does seem a little bit astronomical to me, but that's, the federal, all the federal regulations that are tied to the money that we're getting to help pay for this, we have to have people, we have to have people to meet those requirements. So regardless of how crazy it seems, we ha- this is the sort of thing that we have to do. So, uh, our federal government at its finest sometimes, but at least they're covering 75% of the project, so it's hard to argue with them. So there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposing sign? Motion carries.
Free money is expensive.
That's right. Free money is expensive. Well, it leads to a question of how many of the projects, uh, related to federal dollars are we gonna continue to go after? It's great that the federal government provides a, a, a large amount of money for the projects, but when you don't have people time to do it, and we have limited resources, when there's so much, so many strings attached to the federal dollars, it makes it difficult. Nonetheless, that's a topic for, uh, future, uh, future discussion. Item 215, Design Engineering Agreement for Project 7951, Traffic Signal Back Plates and Red Light Confirmation Indicator Lights. David, one last item.
One more. Uh, so this is federal funding through the Highway Safety Improvement Program, the HSI. Um, typically, this is funded on a 90% federal, 10% local match basis, with the exception of design engineering. Uh, this project, it's actually a, the state ended up bringing together a couple of the projects that we had previously applied for, um, and putting them all into one project. In the past, we ended up applying for, uh, red light indicator lights on Gateway Drive. We ended up having a separate application for the retroreflective back plates, and then we had a couple of other projects as well. And what they ended up doing is they took all those applications and they combined it into one, and then they also shuffled around the, uh, the scope of the project and actually increased the scope of the project, uh, beyond what we had originally requested. Um, so in the areas that we were requesting retroreflective back plates, they ended up also adding in the red light confirmation indicators. This was a project that we originally were planning on doing with in-house staff, but between the inability to fill the, uh, the current openings that we have, uh, and the, uh, expansive, or the expanding of the scope of the project, we ended up sending this one out for a consultant as well. KLJ Engineering were chosen from the qualified, uh, list of engineering firms. We ended up negotiating an amount of $104,754 for the design engineering for this project. And, uh, with that, staff is recommending approval of the agreement.
Any comments or thoughts? Move by Weigle, second by Veen. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposing sign? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you to our engineering department for all you guys do. I know it's a big job. Uh, item 216, Public Transportation Route Changes. Good evening, Ms. Veen.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. I'll direct your attention to the presentation on the screen. Am I able to advance this? Oh, there we go. Okay, the 2017 Transit Development Plan recommended restructuring the city's area transit bus routes in order to address declining ridership, align service levels with demand, and improve on-time performance. In July 2018, CAT implemented a restructured system that introduced peak and off-peak service, a midtown transfer hub, and expanded evening service. Since that time, we've gathered lots of input from users and operators and identified three main shortcomings. Those are on-time performance of a, a couple select routes, directness of travel to destinations on 32nd Avenue South, and a mismatch in peak service times versus peak ridership times. We are proposing changes to address these shortcomings. The proposed changes allow more time to complete select routes, and the proposed changes better align arrival times on UND campus with class and work schedules. The proposed changes provide direct connections from downtown and UND campus to destinations on 32nd Avenue South like Walmart, and connections are also improved between UND campus and Choice Health and Fitness, and between Midtown and Altru. So since the new routes went into effect in July of 2018, the ones that are performing best are those that operate during regular daytime service, Monday through Saturday. And the routes that have performed the worst are those that operate only during peak hours or in the evening. So the peak and expanded evening services that we introduced in 2018 are not being supported by ridership. In fact, the data indicates that most ridership actually occurs in the middle of the day, not during traditional morning and afternoon peak ridership times that you would see with auto travel. So the proposed changes that you're considering tonight are to better align service levels with demand by removing the peak buses and one evening bus so that we can add more service throughout the day. Frequency on Route 3, which is the most-used route, will improve from 60 minutes to 30 minutes, and the number of buses on the road in the middle of the day will stay at a consistent eight instead of six. These proposed changes were made available to the public on March 5th, and we received input through March 29th, and the feedback was overwhelmingly positive. And several users noted that the changes that are being proposed would significantly improve their travel with CAT. There were a couple of timetable adjustments that have been made to accommodate individuals' work schedules, and also some stop locations, um, next slide. Also some stop locations were modified or added to accommodate passengers as well. So the full report on the impact of the 2018 route changes, and every public comment along with each proposed route map and schedule are included in the staff report. We're recommending approval of the proposed changes to take effect on Ju- June 3rd of this year, and with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Ms. Veen? Ah, Ms. Marshall.
Could we have anticipated the ridership being greater during the day? It seems odd that with our historical data that we wouldn't have known that that is a, a peak time of ridership.
I think in, in transportation planning, that's a big assumption that you make, um, in all kinds of plans, but I agree, that was probably the biggest surprise that we, we saw with this. We're looking to correct it.
I think you, and then, and follow-up question, or a separate question, uh, the last plan created two transfer hubs, correct?
Yes.
And so, uh, just general thoughts on how that has worked as opposed to having just the one downtown?
So it has been an adjustment for riders. Uh, one of the main, uh, things that we're looking to accommodate here is more direct service from downtown. So, uh, users are looking to go from downtown to Choice Health and Fitness without having to transfer, or from downtown to Walmart on 32nd Avenue without having to transfer. So, um, the midtown transfer hub as something that users had to rely on to make those trips is something that has not been received very well. We'll continue to use midtown as a transfer hub to make, um, trips shorter for people, but as far as, um, the, the directness of routing from downtown, that's something that we're looking to bring back.
Thank you. Put that, I would move approval.
There's a motion by Marshall, second by Veen. Other comments? Mr. Veen? Mr. Weber?
If I may, um, uh, my colleagues at UND, the city's, uh, the largest employer in the city, um, those folks have recently been hearing that it's likely that their parking fees will go up a great deal. And yet, despite the fantastic improvements of service, uh, to UND, I believe that there's a, a currently a bus going in and out of UND every hour, every half hour, bottom and top of the hour.
Correct.
Uh, and, uh, the distance that many people walk from a parking space to buildings on campus is generally greater than the distance they would have to walk from their home to a bus stop. And yet, uh, we've had a difficult time getting more riders at UND. I hope that, uh, we might see some increases. Uh, in fact, uh, a monthly bus pass, unlimited ridership, just $35 a month. Um, and, uh, the cost for UND, uh, would be maybe around $10,000 is all, which might sound like a lot, but that's only about 20 of those parking passes. Uh, the cost of 20 of those parking passes could cover, um, uh, ridership for all faculty and students at UND, is my understanding. So I hope that, uh, our partners at, at UND are, are listening to this. I believe they are, and, and thinking about this. It would be fantastic to be able to see, uh, some of the pressure taken off of parking at UND through, uh, uh, greater use of, of CAT in our city. Uh, nice work, um, and I, I know that I had some constituents who were quite just pleased with the, uh, changes last summer, and they seem, uh, happy, maybe even excited about these, uh, proposed corrections. These will go into effect, um, uh, June of this year? Is the intention with, with council approval?
Correct.
With that, I'm, I'm ready to, to vote. Thank you. Questions?
Very good. I, uh, I know Ms. Weaver had been here multiple times speaking on this item. Have you had direct conversations with her?
She has provided input that the, uh, the proposed changes will meet her needs.
That's great news. And my other question is, the previous, this previous version was a trial. We talked about it. We're gonna implement changes. It wasn't, didn't work? We would solicit input? We did. We're making more changes, right? So when are we gonna evaluate if we need to gather more public input?
Well, I think that the six months that we allowed to, to allow the, the users to adjust to the new system, this isn't as, as drastic of a change, so I think we can maybe shorten that timeframe down, but, but you do need to give the users at least a couple of months to adjust and to acclimate to the service, and then, um, evaluate how it operates in, in multiple seasons. So... So with this last case, we started them in the middle of summer, evaluated them into the middle of winter, so that was an adequate timeframe.
I just want to make sure that we're listening to our riders and making sure that the new changes work for them as well.
Yes, two more.
Yes, Mr. Weber, certainly.
When I've ridden public transit in other communities, it's always very helpful to have a sign at the bus stop letting me know when I can anticipate the next bus, either that or an app on my phone. Could you talk about those two things quickly?
Yes, we do have a live app called CAT Crowder, so you can download it for free. You can track the buses in real time. It gives you predictions. In fact, today, we sent out an alert to everyone with the app about the detours due to the Sorely Bridge closure, so it's very useful right in your hands. And then we've also, as far as the digital signage goes, we have received funding for an estimated four digital signs at major stop locations that would show a countdown of estimated arrival times, real-time arrival times, so you can be at a bus stop, you can look up and see how many minutes away the route is.
I'm expecting increased ridership over the next couple of years.
I should hope so. I should hope so. There's a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. I think we have a Board of Equalization meeting tomorrow night at five-thirty, same place, same time, just as a reminder, it'll be on TV as well. And, same time, five-thirty, Joint Grand Forks, East Grand Forks meeting, right here in City Council Chambers. Nothing else on the agenda? Anyone care to go move? Move by Veen, second by Marshall, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.